...a story and with budget presentation number one, we talked about the budget drivers. That is, that means what is forcing the budget to move forward? And what contributes to any type of increases that we make now? As well as where we place some of our programmatic expenses. Budget presentation number two, we talked about where the money comes from, right? Where the sources of it, it's state aid or tax dollars or other majors. So tonight, this is the three-part budget. Under New York State guidelines, the budget is divided into three fundamental categories. First is administrative expenses, second programmatic expenses, that is most important. That really encompasses approximately seventy-nine to eighty percent of our expenses. And third, capital, what types of improvements we will make on buildings and grounds and the capital expenses that we made. This is really a very good way of looking at the budget. This gives you an idea of where the money is coming from and how the money is spent. So in order for us to understand the details of the budget, I'm going to turn the program over to our Assistant Superintendent for Finance and Operations, Mr. Sodhi Bawazi, who is truly an expert in this area. Mr. Bawazi, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. As Dr. Phil said, the budget consists of four. And this year, we have been doing a nine-month-long budget. And we are also able to identify where the increases are coming from in each part of the budget. That is the budget from first quarter to the last quarter. It gives you a kind of analysis and the trend. What do these trends mean for twenty-one, twenty-two? What do you project in twenty-two, twenty-three? What have you expended here today? And what are you projecting for the twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth school year? The third part is what is used for the three-part budget. And the three-part budget came about, I think, around nineteen ninety-eight. Schools did whatever they wanted to do. They presented their budget in any format that they determined internally. Then the state came up with this law that you have to divide your budget by components. And what have you included in each component? They divided it in three areas: administrative, program, and capital. Administrative simply doesn't mean administrators. It includes the salary and benefit of all standardized school personnel who spend more than fifty percent of their time doing supervisory work. Whatever education expenses, they are processing, legal fees, district expenses, expenses for budget food are all included in the administrative portion of the budget. Property insurance is also included in the administrative portion of the budget. Go ahead.
So when you say legal fees are included between the administrative aspect and the portion of everything, so are you going to change our entire legal field theory and story? E is included in the budget or in the portion of the legal fees?
E, the legal fees is related specifically to the instructional portion of the budget, like legal areas for special education services. That can be added to the programmatic piece.
But let me ask it this way, y'all, if you can give me an answer. So when we come out legal fees here, we have certain things that are part of the retained.
Yes.
And then other things that are part of the outside of the retained.
Correct.
So my question to you on the administrative part, our legal fees, that only the things that are on the retained or that are also part of the outside?
Now, if I understand that question correctly, let me answer it this way. General counsel fees, labor costs are a part of the administrative. So when you begin to break it apart and see exactly which services are related to student progress, that you pull it out and add it to the programmatic section of the budget.
It's all presented that way.
Thank you.
So what is the program component? The program component is the main part of the budget. It is the salary and benefit of teachers, supervisors, who spend a deep majority of their time in teaching. You got to include teacher-related benefits. So when you look at this very chart, it follows the same budget drivers that we identified previously. If you go through the budget driver, you see that some of those costs are really what you are going to see because this portion of the expenses for most any extent of the budget. Instructional support, equipment, all recreational activities, athletics, scouting development, transportation, transportation is very interesting. To buy a new bus, the cost to lease a new bus is part of the capital, not instruction. But all the costs related to student transportation are part of the program because they are related against the student. So they pull it out and they're part of the program. And what is the capital component? We build the structures, also our custodial services, supplies, service contract. A service contract is all costs related to items that often that we cannot do ourselves and we have to contract it out, to contractors. APA secret, electrical, and that kind of stuff. You know, they are high-dollar value items, but they don't fall, they don't go up to cap our budget. It's something that we do inside, we do here in the district. We bring it out, we contract this and contract this to those who provide for it. And then capcar construction, those are the large projects that we send to the state for approval. And this piece also includes any debt service that we pay. That is the mortgage that we pay on our construction project, as well as the lease payment on energy performance contracts. Budget for utilities, electric, water, and telecom services are all included in the capcar component. And just like I said, bus purchases are included in the capcar component. The reason why the bus piece is included here is that some students, some students do lease buses and they have to pay the debt service.
Can I just ask a question, just for clarification, under the cap construction? We said transfer to capital includes one point seven million for a period of eight months. Just for clarification, isn't that money that is also being covered by our insurance? This is separate, because where are we? From the other side of the bill, we have a two point five million for that?
No.
Just for clarification.
Yes, yes. The two point five billion dollars is what we had on our balance sheet at the end of last year. The damage occurred on the west side. Now we have to fix the east side. This one, in addition to the two point five billion dollars that is on our balance sheet, which we had set aside in the accounting staff, is what we are going to achieve to fix the east side of the building. That makes the four point two billion dollars in order.
Just pulling my phone closer.
Okay, so two point five is from last year's budget, which was the capital construction repair work we used, where we needed to, we ran into problems in middle school with the west side of the building that throws up and our insurance covered all the replacement work that we had to do. So you're saying that the two point five and one point seven is what is projected for repairs in middle school?
That is what we have set aside. This is a lot of what's on the east side of the building. We are talking about, you know this, you are talking about mechanical system there, the entire west side, east side of the building.
That's what you're talking about?
This is just our projection. When we pay it, that's when we get the actual price of the construction. We don't know then, we have to set money aside. We don't know how much it will cost unless we do, we bring it up and contractors pick it up and then we get the actual cost of the project. Right now, we are just setting the money aside.
So of the one point seven that we're looking to, you know, put into this budget, how much of that is state aid?
About sixty percent of the amount we spend on construction.
Sixty percent of the one point seven, that's in fact what we paid for.
Correct.
We say aid, not paid by contractors.
You paid for interest and they didn't manage to.
Okay, okay, okay. But sixty percent is aid.
Can you say what the new feedback, I want to just tell what they said. So all our programs, all our projects that we do within the district here, are we getting sixty percent returns on the dollar, on everything that we spend?
Not, only if they are free and approved by the state.
Right.
All these have to be, they have to send plans and specs to the state by the architect. It has to be certified by the architect. They have to build it up and we have to open that gate. There has to be a line, we have to go through the process, unless approved. If we do it in-house, like the repair call that I spoke about, if we hire contractors to come and do work for us, say something breaks, it costs about a thousand dollars. Sometimes it has a pain to go through the state process because by the time you pay the architect, the knowledge we go through with the project spec, it has a pain. So sometimes we're building out, we have off project, off-thing built that we use to build those projects out. So those ones are not aided. It is just a large project, like the high school brick construction was a large capcar project. And all those projects were approved by the state. And those are the ones that are aided by the state. And our aid-to-aid ratio is about sixty percent of the approved costs. I emphasize that, approved expenses.
Yeah, right. We have to realize also, we're not going to state aid until it's finished.
Yes.
You know, we can't, we can't like start something and think that we're going to get this two percent back immediately. We're not going to get it, we're not going to depend on the state on who finishes.
One point five, one point five.
If they don't get it by now.
I just have one more question in regards to the bus purposes that you have here. If, if I'm correct, I don't believe in our district group ever purchased any school buses. So the question that I have, what is the benefit of leasing a state? Leasing a bus, does the district save money by leasing versus having a contract with the company?
Sometimes it does. It all depends, especially on the number of buses you want to lease. Sometimes if you are going to, if you are going to plan on acquiring about ten buses, there's a heaven on the budget, so sometimes it makes sense to go and lease it. Of course, it also depends on the interest that you're going to pay because when you lease, you pay interest away. We, because we contract all our transportation at the moment, we are not leasing any buses or don't own any school buses. But the reason why I brought this up is there's a law on the books which is calling for school district to go electric by 2020. So all school buses on the road by 2035 should be electric. So I don't know whether I would go that route. I just came up from a meeting today, so I just wanted people to be aware that there's a possibility that we could change some of our fleet. And it gives you, when you have your own fleet, it gives you a lot of flexibility. The kid gets sick in the middle of the school day, you don't have to call the contract bus driver to come and pick that kid up. Because usually when they come to pick their kid, there's a standard cost that we have to charge. When you have your own fleet, you have a lot of flexibility. I mean, all you have to do is to pay the bus driver, the labor cost, and that point is it. So a lot of school districts are thinking about it. And of course, this is something that the state is encouraging also to the children. You don't have to do it, but to look at that.
Just with every news, I heard you what they, I think you said that if a child gets sick and the bus will take them home, the parents regardless come to pick them up, plus it's someone that's not. So you don't need to.
It all depends, it all depends. The parent cannot bring that, if that kid is qualified for transportation, typically, we take that kid home. And usually when you contract with a vendor, they have a standard charge.
Kid never gets dropped off by bus.
When they come to pick their kid up, the minimum that they would let you do is two hours in, two hours out. So when you have your own fleet, you have a lot of flexibility. What will take fifteen minutes, they will charge you starting two hours in, two hours out.
Who's going to correct that? Not one educator is going to correct that?
Can I ask a question? Just because I don't, I think I'm learning something today. So if you're, if you're telling, you know, my daughter is over in northwest, she gets sick, there's a bus that will take them home?
No, somebody correct this, please.
We have to call the bus company. We have, we don't have a bus sitting there. It depends.
Right, right, but we don't, we don't own our buses, we don't, no, we have a contract.
Has nothing to do with that.
And probably one of the better, one of the benefits of that is that we don't have to maintain it.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Yes. It's, it's, it's just a flexibility, it's both ways. You don't have to bend that, but at the same time, you know, you get the other benefit of the flexibility. Thank you. So what are the program expenses? Yeah, but it's great.
Nobody corrected that.
Compared to the 2022, compared to the 2024, you can see the difference is about one hundred and eleven thousand dollars. When you come to the program component, you see there's a big difference between last year and next year. And why is it? When you go back to the budget drivers that I spoke about at the third, the first presentation, you see that most of the costs that we have outlined over there is what is driving this. Employee benefits, health insurance costs.
Can't believe no one corrected that.
Occupational education, special education centers. When you do run through, you would see that in fact the cost is very, very, the increases in cost is very significant for the street. When it comes to the capcar component, the difference is about one point five million dollars. And why is that happening? Remember the first presentation, we talked about a twelve point five million dollars debt service that we're going to go and refer in next year. And that is the main cause of the increase in the capcar component. This is at the chart, which shows, you can see that in both cases, the program component is the largest portion of all the capcar, every project, largely in addition. So when you see this three-part component, the budget brochure, the budget needs letter that we send it out, follows the same format. You would see the administrative component, the program component, and then the capcar component. School district are required to follow that format when this is set, the budget is about. The next project budget will be on April nineteenth. And we'll do the budget review and production at that time.
Thank you. I have a question, but I have, I think I have to answer your question. The money, the money that gets earmarked for the middle school, okay, can only be used on that project and it can't be used anywhere else in the district?
It can only be used because that proposition is from now here and it's specifically designated for capcar construction. It can only be, the two point five million dollars can only be used for construction.
He said that for second, his question was for that particular project.
Mr. Neil? Building throughout every.
His question was.
I have a question related to that.
He had a good question, actually.
David might have some insight on this. Is, so when this, the experts on the west side, the insurance company, are the insurance, is the insurance someone going to cover the east side of the building? Or they're not going to cover it?
They will not cover, in fact, they are not covering. At this point, we are going back and forth with them because even for the west side, they are looking at it very carefully. We are going up and forth with them and see, because this happened here, we have to cover it. Just like when you do at home, when you have an accident, the insurance will say, I'm going to cover this, we are going back and forth with them. It's usually not easy, especially when it comes to their case working the buildings. They will say, you know, it only affects, at this time.
Now, they're going to cover from one side to the other. You can't, they can't cover it.
Fix that side.
A preventive mechanism. That's the claim.
Just want to understand, insurance covered the damage on the west side at a hundred percent?
Yes.
But now going forward, they will not cover the east side because now it's.
The east side?
Yeah.
Yes. They will cover the east side.
So just, just to kind of clarify for you, okay. And so obviously, the west side is an accident, right? For, for, so covered. And what they're saying is now the east side, okay, there's a danger in the, you know, piping, the flooring, the electrical, you know, the university and so forth. They're not even sure that that should be covered as well to prepare to west side because we're talking about a building that is, you know, sixteen years old, sixteen plus years old. So that's what this is talking before, as you mentioned earlier, is that it's not from seventy. Maybe needed to complete that whole, there's about three floors of a building, very large building. So that's what, so insurance would cover it.
Yeah, that was the main to my question. Is insurance, is there not going to be coverage because of the age going forward?
I do have a couple of questions for you. One is the aid that we quote maybe getting from your state that's not confirmed as a budget, correct?
Yes.
And when we.
We always, we know our aid ratio.
Okay. The next question I have is that I know that the difference between last year's budget and this year's budget is, you know, I see. So the question that I have is this, I know that you had shared with us that you guys were going back to the building administrators to see maybe where they could potentially cut, if there's certain things that they could maybe not need or I would say not need, but certain things that they could maybe cut the budget with or. When will we find out how that's looked out in terms of what were they able to do? And if it was not a significant difference, what can we do in that point in time? Can we, will you bring it back to the board to say we need to go through some line, line items again to see if there's any different areas that we need to cut? That's my question.
That is something that one will happen. At this point, I've been going back and forth with Dr. Lee and Dr. Lee. We've been developing that list. I asked her yesterday, she was, she and I were talking about this and say, you have to go through this. And to her point, unless you know the staffing, it's very difficult to know what to cut because you have to know how you are going to arrange your schedule in the classrooms to be able to know which positions you will have to work on to reduce the staffing. So it is a thorough process, unless you know all those factors, you just don't cut. You have to go deep into what you are doing in the buildings. And she, she just gave us a tentative date of June one, right? That's the date that they picked the fastest schedule. So at that point, she's French, she made it. We get it back from the district, she showed us a detailed list yesterday. We've been going back and forth. And also, we have to go through other lines in the budget as we go through this. We can cut five thousand from here, we can cut, you know, ten thousand from here. That's what you do to bring it down to the number. And we are also, of course, waiting for this aid grant.
So that's putting that on the side of the building administrators looking at their budget and making changes. You guys are currently looking at where you can cut different areas. So would that information be provided back to the board? So if we have any questions about, where we want to say, well, can we cut a little bit more from here? So take from here, take from there, because on the nineteenth, it's a budget review adoption. There won't be an opportunity for us to make those suggestions or whatever suggestion you bring before us, if we have any discussions about it. That's my question.
I think within two, we should be able to finalize it, right, Babal?
Okay, if at that point there's any questions that we have, we can divide those questions to you.
Right.
But then on the nineteenth, that's the adoption as well.
We will be giving you that feedback as we go along. We are halfway through, we are rolling in.
Can I ask a question? So that means that we have to call another meeting to go through this here because if we're talking about, we said possibly two weeks, the adoption on the nineteenth here, so the board would have to meet again in order to make any changes at least be made, correct?
We will, we're giving the, we're giving that list as we go along so that, you know, we can, we can decide whether we need another day to finalize it, yes.
Yes, because one thing to give the board, the information is another thing for the board to get together and decide what has been cut. You understand what I'm saying?
Yes.
That's, that's great that the board can review the documentation, but the board still has to get together to be able to come to a decision of what we have to cut or what may need to be cut. So there's, there's going to have to be another meeting before the nineteenth occurs.
That will be, that will be a good idea.
That's not, that's what I'm saying as well, is whatever I was saying. And I think more importantly is that allows for us, kind of the board, to have the discussion, to hear everything, and then if you have any other suggestions to discuss, and therefore there, whereas we have an actual discussion, it also allows for your community to hear what that discussion is about versus the last presentation, which is the budget review adoption, that also, we're going to be, we're going to be this way to do that, and they'll be surprised, oh, they won't pay attention to us. So it, it may mean that we may need to do another meeting so therefore we can hear, we can see as a board, what were the recommendations that came back to the building, building administrators? We can't just rely on them, we may have to cut from other areas so therefore we can get the number down even, even lower, so.
We're going to, we're going, we're going to continue to update the list and we'll discuss the bottom meeting.
Yeah, you just whispered that maybe we could do it on April 12th, because that's a possibility. So therefore, we, at least we can go, now, once again, like the line by line, we have the line by line, so where else could we take, like you said, a little from here, a little from there, to, to lower the, the budget? Because I don't want it just to come from the building administrators, where else can we assess how we have to look at? So it's not just the building administrators, you're also looking at, for example, when we're talking about, um, yeah, it's also administrative component, which is important, as well as the, the capital component, when you're talking about like custodial maintenance staff. I'm not saying that this is what's going to happen, but we're looking at each of those different components.
It's true.
It's not just the, the program component, I think that's to be clear, we have to look at everything across the board, or administrative, the capital. Because if we only look at one component, which is the programs, then the people that get hurt the most would be the kids.
Then that's, that's. We look at it as a problem. If I was what in line by line, that's for you because if you have ability to see one line at a turn and to analyze it, and if you decide this is where you have to cut, it makes it a lot easier. And I, I, I find it is really good for our purpose.
Is there any sort of miracle that we would get through our A? But it's not going to be sustained throughout the years though. Meaning that we may get more this year, but we may not get.
We have been taught and we are learned that this is the first, this is the first of the last state in big one that we have been here. From next year, they are projecting about 4%. And this will be across the board for all schools that are in the state. So that's going to be a lot of headache that we have to deal with.
Any other board members have any other questions? So at this point in time, thank you. At this point in time, we'll take community input, providing the budget only.
Wendy Kestrel, I'm really glad that I came here because that was a juicy. I've been watching, um, the budget meetings, you know, online. Um, Dr. Lynn, I think that you've actually done a great job with your questions, I want to compliment you on that. A couple of things, you know, you're saying these three components to a budget, this line by line budget isn't presented that way in public. I mean, why not presented that way? This is administrative, this is capital, this is programs. So for the late end or taxpayer follow-up, it becomes difficult to know line by line budget. Um, as far as electric vehicles, you know, for, it has to be a place for 2035, you change your president, that can change at any time. Um, you're going to send your kids home on a school bus, might be literally the craziest thing I just heard on this. No, he said that, she did say, you can send the kid sick, you want this on there, you can send a kid on the bus. And that's a huge liability issue, nobody does that, nobody does it in the district, it's not viable, that was ridiculous. Buying your own buses, I mean, I don't know, this is the taxpayers' money, which is upsetting to listen to this. Um, I have a question about the bathroom renovation on the East Side. So the West Side was damaged, insurance is covering it, was it a loss recommendation for the East Side? Is it a loss recommendation to upgrade the East Side? Was that why the insurance company?
Do you have a question as well, so we can do them all at one time?
Well, I, I do, I have a couple, but I feel that that's an easy one because I, if it's a loss recommendation, I'm in insurance, you just have to upgrade it. You don't have to spend, and, and I think trustee held it that it's not going to cost 4 million dollars to do that, you just upgrade it to, 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 you know, meet that, that compliance, it's a loss recommendation.
So, um, Dr. Lynn, do I get to answer this question?
I believe it was only if you were working with the insurance company, you had more information on it. I believe it was a loss recommendation to take care of the East Side.
Yes.
Just to be back one closer.
Because the infrastructure, this project, trustee Delos said, is about 50 years old.
I, I understand that, so loss recommendation doesn't mean a complete renovation, it just means to be compliant, so I mean, 4 million dollars seems crazy. Um, and then if I read the proposition correctly, just correct me if I'm wrong, you are putting a 4.2 million dollar proposition on the, on the, on the ballot, 2.5 million, you want to take from reserves, you want to complete your reserves, so it would be down to 1.5 million, and you want to put the burden of 1.7 on the taxpayer, is that correct?
The budget has not been adopted yet, as you know, so there is no proposition that's decided that goes on the ballot at this point. This is a work session meeting, um, to get input from the board as well as from the community, so nothing is finalized yet.
But you passed that by resolution at the work session, I think it was February 1st, we passed a resolution to that proposition. It, you, you didn't, I watched the meeting.
We passed the resolution to take the money out of reserves.
Right, right, because you're taking the money out of 2.5 million, out of reserves and capital.
Correct.
Okay, so you're saying the 1.7 might be adjustable, you might figure that out.
Yes.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, is there a plan to replenish the reserves? Because the reserves are really for emergency use only.
Well, we have to see first what we will double this, we will finally go to land with this budget. And I agree with you, the reserves are technically for an emergency, uh, which we have at this point because of the condition of the East Side of the building. And again, as you correctly stated about the recommendation from insurance. So we have, once we determine the exact amount and cost, which we haven't done yet, then we would come up with a determination pretty quickly.
Okay, so it's possible that maybe less.
It's possible, yes, yeah, absolutely.
That's good news. You know, I was surprised, I hope you're on the board, asked how much new buses?
We're not, we're not, we're not looking at new buses.
Well, well, I have to tell you, seeing the audience is confusing because I heard here, you know, factoring the cost of new buses, you know, I almost fell off my chair listening to that. So are you not doing that?
I think what I said was, new buses are in the capital co, when you have bound, as the standard procedure, if you are buying a new bus.
That's very wrong.
It belongs to the workforce.
Okay, I understand, that's, that's not really how it came across. Okay, um, and then one other thing that came up at a prior budget meeting that I'm really concerned with, and I didn't hear an answer, you know, if we're going to burden the taxpayer on a capital improvement, as a taxpayer, I would much rather be burdened for you to retain teachers or put teachers aides in classrooms to help the children, I think that's money better spent. So I think Dr. Lynn did ask the question, for these people that were hired, um, and they were grant funded, are these teachers, employees rolled over into the new budget? What I've heard at that budget meeting was, we'll figure that out. I would like to know if you are rolling over those teachers into the budget?
The next year, we are able to maintain the same staff, possibly increase staff that we have now. The question will be the following year, when the grant money ends, and, and that's something we can't predict at this point. As you know, some of the positions that we added were really to help the district come back from COVID. And we have to constantly evaluate whether those positions are still needed. But we have no intention at this point of removing any positions unless it's further removed.
Okay, so that's good, because I really want to encourage you to keep teachers and even the teacher aides in.
All right, so just, just one, one clarification before we go further. Um, this boss, you just kind of clarified, if I heard correctly, the statement was that the 2.5 million, so why can't we take, please correct me, why can't we take that money and use it for teachers? Everybody's saying that correctly, but the.
No, 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 I'm saying you're taking the money out for capital improvements. I'm saying you're burdening the taxpayers with that possible project. If I were, if you were to increase the budget because you had higher teachers or something, or added some line items in that, I would be more comfortable with that because the children need it, so.
So, so just for clarification, that the 2.5 million that was taken out.
That's for capital projects, I understand.
Something for capital projects.
Yeah, I understand, and I really don't think, I think the board should really seriously consider that, including your funds, I mean, that's, and I haven't heard, I haven't heard anything about how you're going to replenish your funds. You only can shake your head, no, that's happening.
So your, your, your time is, is, is up, we've been going for a couple of minutes, so just one more question.
News day before today, 13 districts have zero increase, the average is about 2% increase for the other districts. I know as it stands now, it was 3.5 on tax levy increase. I really hope that the board is going to work hard to reduce that. And I do agree, you have to have another budget meeting in front of the public, and, and not only should the administrators be, you know, going through the budget to trip the fact, the board should be putting it all up their sleeves, doing the same thing on behalf of the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, um, community input regarding the budget?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one comment, uh, something that Wendy was saying. Uh, first, we are at this stage now, we're dealing with everything, this is still a triad budget. But one of the things that you mentioned about programs that are, whether you, you mentioned you've been on boards and, and NISB and so on, NISB usually says around 70% of the budget should go to, right to the students. We're up close at 80. So really, this triad budget is putting more money into programs to help us students than the average budget is.
Thank you, Dr. Lynn.
I want to try and help, you just said the magic word, the money goes into the programs. So my question to you is, at what point does this board sit down and input the leaders of the school, of July, et cetera, finally sit down and say, you know what, we did this program, return on the business, it wasn't good, it didn't really prove anything, line by line on the programs that cost tons of money? At what point you go, we're going to scrap this, it didn't do anything? Because you could admit failure, I mean, we're doing a lot around here. But what I'm saying is, you have to really sit down and say, that wasn't worth it, wasn't worth it done. What comes off at that point? What, what was there and what's coming off because it didn't feel positive?
Yeah, that's ongoing. I mean, that's ongoing with the category, daily, on what successfully was not.
So you, so would you go ahead and put it in the budget, it wasn't asked? And you scrap it midstream because it's not working and then you already paid for it? Well, then how, how is that aligned? What's the process to realize that what you put money for doesn't work?
At this point, the new programs definitely put into it this year, which would be emotional literacy, the new ELA program, the new MAD program, those programs are being carried forward.
Okay, and the line by line budget, because I didn't get a chance to look at it, is it even published yet? Is it online for, for doing?
Yes.
Okay, I haven't had a chance, so, but it is line by line, are all those type programs listed line by line so that, no?
No, I think the category, I mean, we have the categories listed, not the line by line.
It is, it is by function code. This is the prescribed chapter account that the state gives us. It goes from, you know, board application to, you know, the budget, the teaching code to infrastructure, the capital, to, to, that's how it goes.
If it's, if it's a new program, it's never been in budget before or anything like that, is there any notation that would indicate that this is new, this is new money, probably as, you know, as something new? Is that any indication of that?
Good question, there's no new program in the budget, otherwise.
Is there any program that's been thrown out?
Give me a phone.
No.
Dr. Lynn, Dr. Lynn wants to say something, just move the mic a little closer.
Yes, Mrs. Shaw, um, the American Rescue Plan was designed to close the learning gaps created by the COVID pandemic. And so many of the initiatives were paid for through the American Rescue Plan monies. And as part of those monies, we purchased a monitoring system called iReady. And it is administered on an 18 week basis. And that is a monitoring system that determines the effectiveness of the initiatives. It's required, it's required on every grant that we determine the effectiveness.
That was the one where 18 weeks after school started, the numbers weren't ranked that much?
Yeah, well, it showed the progress, uh, but they began at a less of sorrowful, uh, point, yes.
Mrs. Shaw, I just wanted to add, um, that you really have to realize before implementation of the program, the research that's put into it before we bring it into district, then there's ongoing progress monitoring. You have to also realize these are scientifically evidence based programs that are going into the district. So it's not that we're experimenting.
How are you, how are you, how are you reading? If emotions, emotions weren't working?
We know beforehand that these are very low standard.
Are they well standard programs in districts that are like, like us, that's part of the research?
If the numbers go up.
That would be a good point to point out, thank you for that.
And just want to, and this boss, you just for, for clarification, when it comes to the budget and any particular program, programs would not be in the budget with the program that's coming to the district. The program usually entails hiring people for those different positions, whether it's teachers within the district that are going to take all the responsibility. So it's, if, if that's the case, if a program is what is the district, the first question is, if it's covered by grant, if it's covered by grant, then that, that won't be, that program won't be seen in the budget. If it's not covered by the grant, um, the program still would be seen in the budget, but you would see it if it connected to the line item for a teacher that may be getting extra money or stuff for that particular position for that program. Am I correct in that?
Yes, and there are no new positions, they're not.
Thank you.
Who's got 15 minutes?
So in the pie chart, would it, it would be who is told to know that even though, I know that grant money is not guaranteed, as we all know, um, but with, for, you know, presentation purposes, put what the estimate, grant money is coming in through, you know, so then you could say, this is the budget, like how much of this is grant money?
This is all general fund, there's no grant money.
So grant money's freebie? And then grant money, if it's current, if it's submitted online and everything else and everything's happy dory, this number would go down because it's funded by grant?
All the position, like Dr. Lawrence said, all the position that are paid from the grant, and all the pay from the grant are not included in the general fund budget that I presented. This is general fund budget only.
Understood, but my question is, if grant money comes down the pipe.
It just gets a moment on top of it.
You get your check, this, this number goes down because of the funding.
You cannot.
So do you only, do you only buy something if you have a grant? Or is it, you offset your budget because of grant money that was achieved?
Actually, we are not supposed to split money. So when you get grant money, it is not on top of what you already have. You are supposed to.
Didn't she just say that?
You're supposed to use it for specific programs.
Oh, that's, this is only, this is.
Bipolaric in general fund, you cannot say a bipolaric.
Oh my God, then we give you a certain amount of time.
And therefore.
Can I be kidding me?
To use it to replace what.
You can't do that.
Marco, Marco, Marco. Do we have any time, time?
I just want, I want to, I see that the time's coming out, but the board and the administrators have taken up a lot of 15 minutes, so I would like to ask if you could extend, take a vote to extend the budget, it's pretty important.
So missing this question, thank you so much for coming to the mic, stay there. So, Mrs. Shuff, thank you so much for coming to the mic and to state that. What I was given to say, if there's any additional community input, if there's going to be additional community input, then I will ask the board, ask for policy, if they would like to extend the questions for additional. Thank you. Does anyone else have any community input regarding the, the budget? So, board members, would you like to extend this, the question regarding the budget for additional 10 minutes?
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, so, all right, so everyone, everyone who's in there will extend it for another 10 minutes. Saying aye.
Oh, who said that? Trustee Santos and him else?
You said aye.
Okay, thank you. So everybody with trustee Santos, agree to let taxpayers speak. Thank you.
All right.
Correct. Okay, so I have a.
Excuse me, hold on, wait a second, please wait, please wait. We have to do the time for 10 minutes, redo everything. Please wait a second.
Thank you. Okay, so I, I have a couple of questions. The last year's budget had the lines broken out some. It wasn't just line by line. And I noticed something in last year's budget and I don't know if it carried over to this year. So I know that we have a maintenance crew and we have equipment. It said, yeast removal was 12,000 and the fields, the baseball, softball fields were 40,000. So it's, there's only four fields, right, high school and middle school. Why would we be contracting that out if we have our own maintenance crew? Why are we paying $12,000 to get rid of geese because geese supply back? I'll just ask my three things now, is that okay? And then you were talking about assessing programs and knowing if they're successful on a scientific base, but ruler is about moods and it's about emotions. And it was asked at the ruler presentation, I think by trustee Seehoff, what's the, how do you gauge success? What's the metric? And the presenter, who was very trained, he told us he was very trained, said he has no answer and he doesn't know how that's going to be measured and there was no metric. So I don't know how you're going to measure that or continue that if the person who's leading it doesn't know the metric. And the last thing that I just want to bring up is last year, the music program was cut by $13,000. I'd like to know what are the programs that you think are being cut this year?
Dr. Phil?
Yeah, I'm going to comment on the rule that Dr. Land wants to also make some comments. A program like the ruler program, initially you're not going to have hard data. There's no way you can do that. It's soft data, it's largely teacher reports. It's our label field, our label needs its impact and student behavior, talking to students, talking to parents, and also by our observations when we observe classes to make sure that we see the program in action. Over time, over time, and this is not going to be a one year, a one year measure. It should reduce suspensions and it should reduce behavioral incidents related to discipline. And I'm saying should because that's happened at every other place it would use.
The place won't take it. I agree with you, I'm just trying to prove that science is at my house too much.
Yeah, it's, it, there's, there's no more data.
So what was your first question about the geese for $12,000?
Are you paying $12,000 this year or did that, that go on, put it all into this year's budget?
The geese chaser is really fine. I asked the same question, but it's, you have to go to that field. We do get the geese chaser.
I, I think the position of the geese, I know. But we didn't, we didn't help to do that. So is it 12,000 or is it more than that?
I have to go back and look at the expense for the last couple of years to be sure that it's.
I'm not suggesting it's a mess, I'm just saying geese come back.
It didn't recover.
And then what about the, the maintenance? We have a maintenance crew and equipment, why are we contracting that $40,000 for four fields?
Sometimes, some of the, because we need some specialized equipment to do those work, we have to contract it out. It's not everything that our maintenance personnel are equipped to do. So sometimes we do have to contract those services out.
But it might be cheaper to buy a drag net behind your tractor trailer than to pay $40,000 every year to do the fields. You know? Oh, so maybe it's important evaluating that when you're going through the budget. That might be a nice little cut there, $40,000. And then the last question was, last year, music was cut by $13,000. Is there any other programs that need to be cut? That you know?
Dr. Land, can you comment? Why don't you do that and then it's, it's, are we cutting any other programs? We're really not cutting.
Okay. And my only last comment here is a board of education represents every single taxpayer and resident in the community. You should be neutral, personal feelings should never come into play. Regardless how you feel about the speaker at the podium, you represent everybody. And in professionalism, the honor is on you. Thank you.
Well, Jay, I want to clarify, when I said before scientifically evidence-based programs, I know we're not an educator, but anyone that knows anything about that knows that I was speaking as an academic.
Okay, you didn't, you didn't prepare for that, but thank you for that.
Obviously, you think I had to, thank you.
Well, you did because ruler's not scientific, as we just learned. But if you want to continue to argue, as I said, you have to.
All right, so any other community input regarding the budget presentation? Any other community input regarding the budget presentation? So at this point in time, I'm going to make, well, two things. One is, Dr. Phil, you wanted to say about the drama club?
Yeah, I just wanted to remind everyone that the drama club has been working very hard over the past several months. The play is in the heights. Some of us had the opportunity of attending one of the rehearsals. It's amazing. It's absolutely amazing. And if you come to the play, I think you'll agree with me. So the showtimes are Friday night at 7:00 PM at the high school, Saturday at 2:00 PM and 7:00 PM once again at the high school. It's $5 for students, $10 for adults. And that money is really to fund these types of programs for the kids. And I have to tell you, we had a great time, those of us who've been attending rehearsals.
Thank you, Dr. Phil. And just as a reminder to the community, on March 28th at 7:30 PM in the high school cafeteria is a community forum for the superintendent search. So if you'd like to attend, you can attend. And also as a reminder, if you go to the website, if you have any input or suggestions, there is a survey that you can complete as well, which is on the website, if you think is there. So can I have a motion at, it is now 8:30. We're going to go into executive session for advice accounts. We're going to the ATA negotiations and particular persons employment history. Carol Seehoff is first, Dave Felton is second. All those in there, aye. Seven, there are, there will be no vote on these matters when we come out. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. All right, leave it.
Leave it here. Yeah, yeah.
Hold it.
Thank you. How are you? How's it, how's it going?
Did you, did you ask, did you ask? If, if there was going to be a special note going out to parents regarding the survey? Like you did, you said yes tomorrow, there's a robo-call and a meeting invite for the 28th.